Good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Lowell Zone Order Appeals Public Hearing for August 11th, 2025. Just a few reminders. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, if folks can just put on silent and turn off so it doesn't disrupt the meeting, it'd be appreciated. And then you can join the meeting tonight in the City Council Chambers, also through Zoom and/or by calling in with planning with DPD ahead of time. All right, we'll move into continued business. We have ZBA-2025-17, petition is a variance. The applicant is Peter Dendramiris, property located at 84 Walker Street. The Lowell Zone Order Appeals will hold a public hearing until interested persons relative to an application to add paving to 84 Walker Street. The subject property is located in traditional multifamily TMF zoning district. The project requires variance relief per section 6.1 for relief for the parking dimension requirements and any other requirement of Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ian Ainsley. I'm an engineer from Isabrem, here representing the applicant, Endros Realty. They brought me on after your previous hearing. At that hearing, you asked them for a dimensioned engineered plan, basically. I provided that. The board suggested at that hearing that the applicant look into angled parking along Witchfield Terrace. And so I went in that direction, and I was able to fit four angled parking spaces. And a reminder, this is a four-unit building, so that would be one space for each of those units. I think the only dimensional variance we would need to make that happen is the curb cut width, the total curb cut width. It would be a 52-foot-wide curb cut, and I believe the maximum is 24. But I think the intention of that maximum is for a driveway, you know, and access to come in. I don't think it's intended for parking that's right along the street. I will mention that there is one tree that would need to be removed in order to fit those spaces. I showed two red maples to replace that tree. But that's really the gist of what we're proposing. We have four angled parking spaces. They're angled in such a way that Witchfield Terrace is one direction, so that we who are coming west, you would be able to drive in from that one way into the angled spaces. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Ainsley. We're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition is petition. Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Johanna Delam. It's 42 Litchfield Terrace and live directly across from 8486 Walker Street, which is on the side of the building. I would just like to point out a few things. I'm going to try and be as clear as possible. On August 7th, a document online, I did review the documents online, it stated that the additional parking, paving is not for parking, which clearly it is. On July 31st, the graph shows he wants four spots and he has zero parking. That is not true. His tenants do park, there's five of them, every day they park on Litchfield Terrace, which I say nothing about. I'm trying to be neighborly. I've never said anything to them. I don't, and, hold on a second, so it said he wanted, and he has zero parking, that's not true. His property is 8486 Walker Street. He has parking on Walker Street the way all the other multifamily properties do. There are five cars on Litchfield Terrace all the time, which I say nothing about, I'm repeating myself, I'm sorry. And this is a privately owned one-way street, which consists of seven houses with lots of kids on bikes and scooters. That's what I have to say there. Also, on this permit, nowhere does it state that this parking that they're intending to put enters and exits onto a private way. Nowhere on the document. The next one is 8486 Walker Street, which is, was illegally turned into, not by them, a three-bedroom apartment. Below is a picture showing the original property, which my family owned, so I'm very familiar with the property. I've been there for close to 60 years. The porches were enclosed without permission, it shows the porches here, and also there was never a driveway there. Currently is not a driveway, paved or otherwise. I've shown this picture before. The next one is, according to this graph, it extends beyond their property line, which I took photos of, three feet onto Litchfield Terrace, which once again is privately owned, which they don't pay taxes for. I pay taxes for that. You know, it caused, Litchfield Terrace also, as I mentioned before, was on the list to be paved, but was removed by the city because it's a privately owned street and they said they couldn't pave it. It's in desperate need of repair. So all this additional traffic falls on us, the homeowners. And I put, there are no additional, there are no sidewalks on the street, except for in front of my house. When we measured, I don't know where, he came up with his measurements, we did all the measurements, at a 45-degree angle, it was 14 feet. And then they want to extend three feet beyond that, onto a private way. The email from Timothy French, from the City of Lowell Law Department, which he sent to me, clearly states, which he sent it to me, and I was very grateful for it, that Litchfield Terrace is clearly a private way. And I want to know, where is your document that shows whose address is 8486 Walker Street has the right to use Litchfield Terrace as an enter and exit of a driveway?
Thank you, ma'am.
Also, yesterday, when I was talking to Dennis, the owner, he said that, I said, "Why are these guys fighting this so hard?" He said, "We want to increase the value of our house." Lot easier to sell the house with parking on a private way.
So I'd like to know that. I have clear proof that my terrace is a private way. Where is there legal proof that shows me they have the right to use it? And it extends three feet beyond, onto a private way, according to their own graph? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition is petition. In opposition, in opposition. All right, seeing that portion of public hearing is closed, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor, in favor. All right, seeing the public hearing is closed. Mr. Ainsley, can you just come back to the podium, sir? Before we open up questions and comments from the board, is there anything you want to add, you or the applicant?
My understanding from watching the previous meetings, I think we are in agreement that this is a private way. I think that access issue is outside the purview of the zoning board. I think that's more a legal matter. And so that would be my response to that. I think that doesn't affect the dimensional relief that we are requesting on the property.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ainsley. All right, we're going to open up questions and comments from the board now. The chair organizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the original plan for the paving was to keep it clean and not for parking, right? So now you're looking for four parking on Litchfield. How many units are in that building?
Four. Four units.
Four units. The abutter mentioned that the fact that your paving encroaches by three feet on the private way.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that's coming from. So we had a survey done by Aho Survey. The parking spaces, as shown, go right up to the edge of pavement, which is essentially on top of the right-of-way line. So I don't see where it extends three feet into the right-of-way.
Okay. So...
The parking spaces themselves are fully on the property.
On the property?
Yes.
And so there's four, there's four units there, and no cars park on Walker Street? They all park on Litchfield?
There's some parking on the Walker Street side. So the primary entrance to 86R2 is in the rear, which is the Litchfield side, same with 86R1, and also 84F2 also has its side entrance on Litchfield. So there's, lots of the entrances are on the Litchfield side. But there's also a couple of on-street parking spaces on the 8486 Walker Street side.
Okay.
I believe it's two on-street, if I, if I, right, Dennis, two on-street, sound about right, on the Walker Street side?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, there's still a little confusion, but I will defer to my other members because I do share some concerns, but I'd like to hear what my members say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On your previous two visits, you were looking for one spot. Tonight, you're looking for four. In both sets of comments issued by the DPD staff, they both indicate that a clear narrative was never presented as to why this parking expansion is necessary. So tell me tonight, why you're going from one to four?
Sure, I'd be happy to discuss that again. Last time we spoke, Mr. McCarthy had suggested that three spots would fit there. So as we looked into it and brought an engineer on board, when we initially looked at it, my brother and I, we measured it, we thought it couldn't fit. So we just wanted to pave that 86R2 driveway, that dirt gravel driveway in the back there. When, the last meeting in June, I believe Mr. McCarthy suggested three spots, so we had an engineer come take a look at it, and he said that you could actually fit one per unit. So it seems like it made sense for our tenants in the street to alleviate some of the traffic off the street as well, and to have a parking spot for each of our tenants, it seemed like a no-brainer. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. Dennis, did I listen?
No, that's correct. So I was the one who took the measurements initially, and I guess I must have measured wrong. I'm an engineer, I'm not a surveyor, obviously. So when we brought a professional in, he said otherwise, that we could fit more parking, clean the area up, and make a parking spot for each tenant in the building. So that's what we're looking to do at this moment.
And I think the board understands too, you know, four-unit building, the parking requirement is two spaces per unit, you know, there could be...
Where do they park currently?
I think, as Dennis was talking about, there's two spaces on Walker Street, not on the property, I'm talking off-site parking spaces, they park on the street. And so I think the board understands that any additional parking they can get, especially on-site, is a benefit to their residents.
Well, it could be a benefit. It also could be a severe inconvenience, and the fact that this is a private way. I don't like it.
Could you clarify the inconvenience? I'm sorry, I'm not...
I don't like it.
Could you clarify the inconvenience? I'm just trying to understand.
Well, the inconvenience, you know, on the cars going in and out. There was a problem when, the abutters felt that there was a problem when we were only looking for one vehicle. By the way, I'm not ganging up on you. I tried to get you on the hook last time, to get you to bite on one spot. The devil you knows better than the one you don't. Now they come up with this idea. I don't, is this legal? Can they do this? Peter, excuse me, Dylan?
I can't confirm whether they have the right to use the street, pave a driveway and use the...
Will you take one? Will you take one spot?
Would I take one spot?
Yeah.
I mean, ideally, we'd like four, for our tenants, you know, our tenants have been asking about this for years, so if we could do that, that'd be fantastic, you know? That's what, that's what we're trying to do. And it would indirectly help with the traffic on the street, because there wouldn't be parking on the street. It's a, it's a very narrow one-way road, so if you get those four cars off of the road, it'll kind of help out that whole area. So I'm not really sure what their issue is, but, you know, we're trying to better the neighborhood. You know, we've been, we've had it since 2013. We try to do the best we can with our building, we're just trying to improve it.
But, all right, I get that. But those tenants have a place to park right now, which is not causing a problem, is that correct? Okay, well, that's where we all park, on the street.
So, you're right, they are on the street right now?
Yeah, it's an opportunity to park maybe on the property, but incringing on that private way, and herein lies the problem. Would you take one spot?
Well, sir, right now, we park on Litchfield Terrace. So when there's, when it snows there, I was speaking with Jared just the other day, and we both agreed, when it snows there, it's a disaster. You can barely get through there. So getting the cars off of Litchfield Terrace, onto our property, would definitely open things up, especially when it snows, because it being a private way, the city barely plows that. It's a mess in the winter. I can barely get through there.
Yeah.
And also, we have four units there, so it's also, they have trouble finding parking as well on the street. So this would greatly, again, alleviate that issue.
Ma'am, we, thank you.
Nothing further. I'm blaming you, McCarthy.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is an interesting conundrum here with a private way. Private ways are odd in the city. I don't know quite what to make of them, because anyone can drive on a private way, anyone can park on a private way, ambulances can drive on a private way, trash collection happens on a private way, police cars go in a private way. I don't understand it.
Parking enforcement on a private...
I don't understand it. So I would leave that up to lawyers to fight out with the private way. You currently access your site off of a private way to enter your building. I'm confused as to what the private way piece has to do with this. So I'm going to leave that out, because it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't connect with me as far as how this property operates. I do like the angled parking. I do like the two shade trees, although one of them isn't labeled. Oh, no, it says total two.
Yeah, it just says typical, so they're the same.
Total two, got it. And red maples, wonderful. Those are going to provide a lot of help for the heat island effect over there. That'll be great. I think that's the only way you can solve the parking here, is to angle it. And four is probably the maximum I would ever want to see on this lot, and still preserve green space. It does give you street parking on Litchfield Terrace, private way, two additional spaces, street parking on Walker Street, two additional spaces, which would equal the eight. So in theory, you still have four spaces adjacent to the property on the street, and then four off-street parking. So you went halfway there with the requirements, but it's better than what we have right now. And angling is the only way you can make that work. I do have an issue with the way you drew the parking spaces. So an 18-by-9 parking space is rectangular in nature, not trapezoid. So you did not correctly meet the requirements of zoning for a rectangular space. So we do need to give a variance for the parking dimensions, if we were to grant it.
So the dimensions are taken along the space, and then 90 degrees the width of the space. So that will be the dimension of a car that parks in there. It'll be an 18-foot-long space fitting that car, it's nine feet wide, so it will...
We don't drive trapezoid-shaped cars.
No, I agree. If you, if you're taking a dimension, you know, closest point to closest point...
What's happening is that the rear end of an 18-foot-long truck is out on Litchfield, because the closest corner is basically forming a triangle at the front of those lots, correct? So we do not meet the requirements for zoning for parking space.
No, I think it does. I mean, I've drawn angled parking before. I know what you're saying. It's this dimension that's different.
I'm sorry. Maybe I could just ask Dylan if you could weigh in on this?
Parking spaces are required to be stepped back three feet from the property line, so it would need to be 21 feet deep to meet the parking dimensional requirement.
That's true.
21 feet?
Correct. An 18-foot-long space with three footsteps back from the property line.
Okay, so you don't think we need a variance for the dimensionality of the parking space?
I believe they do.
I believe we do, too, yeah. Okay. That being said, I think this is the best of all worlds. We have four off-street parking spaces where we have none, other than dirt, where people might park on the dirt right now, and at least we're providing parking. We're angling it so that it's going to protect, potentially, the cars parked on the street across the street when people are backing back out on Litchfield Terrace, which is a one-way. And we're basically taking two off-street parking spaces and giving us four, two on-street parking spaces and giving us four off-street. So it's a net win, and we're getting two shade trees. So I think I can go along with this, with the two variances we're looking for, the curb cut and the dimensionality for the parking space. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is a bit of a conundrum to, to remember Brier's point. There's a benefit to you, but there's also, there is a hindrance. There's a hindrance of, you're here for zoning, and the reason you're here is for usable open space, which hasn't been addressed. Your original plans were, area to be paved was significantly smaller than what is being proposed now, and I'm trying to figure out how much more original, you're initially here for usable open space per dwelling unit, and you're presenting updated plans that are showing even more paving and more taking away from usable open space per dwelling unit than what was originally presented.
So I can clarify that. Usable open space is defined in the zoning, it has to have certain dimensions and has to be a certain size. I believe it's five feet from a property line, and I believe the width of the open space has to be 15 feet in width. That, there would be, there's no usable open space over here now. The only usable open space on this property is down here in the front, and that hasn't changed from one version of the plan to the next.
Okay, so then, Dylan, what's...
No loss to usable open space.
Okay. Dylan, what's, I mean, how much of relief are we looking for? I mean, I know this was Peter's, it looks like Peter dealt with this, but I didn't see anything in the comments as to what, what it is the relief that's being, how much of relief is being sought. There was nothing posted, nothing in the, in the plans as to how much relief is being sought here, even with the new plans. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to gather, you know, I don't know if you have an idea or whatever.
I'll confirm the curb cut requirement, but the, for the dimensional requirements for the off-street parking, it requires a variance of three feet from the, three footsteps back from the property line, and then will require a variance for the width of the curb cut.
Okay, so we're not dealing with usable open space per dwelling unit, because that's what's initially been, that was initially brought, was put before us, is the usable, Peter's comment says that seeking section 5.1 for relief from usable open space per dwelling unit requirement. And nothing was mentioned about that in the comments. So I'm, now I'm confused of what, I understand the parking dimensions and everything else, but now, are we not seeking? Is that not before us now, or is that, has that never been before us, and it's just a, I don't know?
Yeah, I don't believe this project required a variance from the usable open space.
To be honest, when I was brought on, I was confused by that, because we're not increasing the number of units. So to me, I don't see how it becomes more non-conforming. And my understanding is, I think it's 250 square feet per dwelling unit.
That's 500, actually, for TMU, TMF, so, which, again, which gets me confused, too, because your open space, the open space on the front doesn't even come close to meeting it. I don't know what's on the side end there that could be usable. And that's why, that's why I was, and that's what, when I looked at the initial plans, there is, you've done, you've taken the, there was a big strip on the top, you saw, I mean, you know on top of it. It was like, on the top, for a small little space for, that was initially supposedly not going to be used for parking, and now it is, and now it's being extended down, which would take away more usable open space.
It's taking away green space. I don't know if I ever would have considered this usable open space, because it's got to be 15 feet in width, and there's just, there's no spot over here that would be 15 feet in width.
Okay. All right. I'll put that aside for now. I mean, maybe it was just a, I don't know if it was an error on staff's part when reviewing the file, as to what relief is actually being sought, but...
Sir, if I could correct one moment. So this area right here, they didn't actually have the measurements here, but there is green space here.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the reason why I was bringing up the question of that, that wasn't measured out either.
So that part, the tenants do use that to grill and do activities there, so it wasn't included in 1,000 square feet here. I don't know the measurements of this exactly, but if I were to guess, you'd probably look another six to 700 square feet there.
No, again, yeah, that's, that's, that's why I was getting confused. Like I said, it wasn't measured out. I mean, it was brought up by staff as to, that's what you were seeking, the relief you were seeking, and, but I didn't understand what, what the relief actually is being sought. So now, I mean, according to Dylan, from what you're telling me, we're not dealing with usable open space at all, right? Okay. All right, so, I mean, that being said, I mean, I'm going back towards the, as long as we're dealing with the parking dimensions, I mean, I kind of tend towards agreeing with my colleague Dennis on this. I think it's, it's, it's the best way to get it done, especially, I understand. And to your point, yep, Mr. Ainsley, you said, like you said, access, dealing with the lot itself, access is, has nothing to do with the dimensions of the property and how we are to review these variances.
Yeah, that's something I think an attorney will look into and see if this property has rights to.
Yep, cool. Great. Yep, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callan. The chair organizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. The first hearing I brought up, the legality of us granting various, variances for, on a private way. Law department looked at it, they said it was within our jurisdiction. Law department's looked at this at least two times minimally. So I feel comfortable that it's within our authority to make these decisions. Now, you know, the abutters can absolutely contest that, they're free to. And I get the frustration, but we just heard that there are five cars parking on the street of Litchfield. This would take four of them off. To me, that's a net positive. As far as on-street parking on a private way, I know there's other private ways within the city that handles it in different ways, and I'm sure you can look into how they handle it. But this is taking four cars off of the street parking on Litchfield and taking them off the street, so it's actually widening the street there, which, again, to me, is a net positive. I don't think there's any way to make everybody happy on this, but I am a big proponent of off-street parking. I think the variance...
The first hearing I brought up, the legality of us granting various, variances for, on a private way. Law department looked at it. They said it was within our jurisdiction. Law department's looked at this at least two times minimally. So I feel comfortable that it's within our authority to make these decisions. Now, you know, the butters can absolutely contest that. They're free to. And I get the frustration, but we just heard that there are five cars parking on the street of Litchfield. This would take four of them off. To me, that's a net positive. As far as on-street parking on a private way, I know there's other private ways within the city that handles it in different ways, and I'm sure you can look into how they handle it. But this is taking four cars off of the street parking on Litchfield and taking them off the street, so it's actually widening the street there, which again, to me, is a net I don't think there's any way to make everybody happy on this, but I am a big proponent of off-street parking. I think the variances for this off-street parking are minimal. So while I understand everybody's frustration, I, I'm in support of this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Havi. Mr. Ansley, I think the plan that you submitted, the updated plan, makes sense to me. Again, I think it goes back to safety for me. I do have the concerns of the neighbors, but anytime we can get more cars off the street and back on, on the property, overall, it's going to be beneficial for everybody. So I don't have any concerns. We talked about parking dimensions and the curb cut in terms of conditions. Are you okay with that?
Can you clarify?
Just the parking dimensions and the curb cuts that we talked about as conditions?
Oh, for the variances that we're requesting? Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other comments by my colleagues here before we move forward with the vote?
I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Proko.
On, on the portion of the, of the property where it says, the applicant said it's open space, it's not reflected on the plan, if I'm right. The part you said that was open space, where they grill and stuff like that?
Yeah, correct. It's not, it's not labeled on the plan. There's a difference, I'm going to say, between green space in reality and usable open space as defined in the zoning, and I don't know if this meets the definition in the zoning. I didn't look at it. I, I don't think it does.
Okay.
But again, by putting in the spaces over here, that's not changing the open space in that portion of the property, regardless of what they put in over here with the parking.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Proko. All right, any other comments by my colleagues? For the motion, all right, seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-17 for variances at 84 Walker Street. The applicant is seeking a variance for curb cut as well as parking dimensional requirements.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second, with the vice chairman. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Are there any conditions?
Two, that we talked about.
Those are the variances. Those aren't conditions, those are variances.
Okay, and just approved.
Yeah, just approved, then.
Okay, approve.
Member Bria.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approved, no conditions, approve.
Is the confusion that there aren't any conditions?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, approve. There are no, there are no conditions.
Yeah, there's no conditions. All right, you've been, I won't, I won't vote, all right? All right, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Have a good night. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the, the hearing's over, ma'am, for that section, I'm sorry. You talk to the, to DPD, yeah. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. We have new business. We have ZBA-2025-30. The petition is a variance. The applicant is Soporn Singh, property located at 110 Branch Street. The applicant has applied to laws of order appeals, seeking a variance approval to convert existing ground-floor commercial unit to two residential units. Properties located in traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district. Their proposal requires variance approval for Section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, the minimum usable open space per dwelling unit requirements, and per Section 6.1 for relief from the minimum off-street park requirements, and any other relief required in the law zoning ordinance. Oh, Mr. Ansley, good evening, sir.
Me again. Ian Ansley, I'm an engineer from Isabram. I am here with Soporn Singh, who's the applicant and the owner of this unit. This is an existing building at the corner of Branch Street and School Street. It's 110 Branch Street. Right now, this is a 10-unit residential building with a 11th commercial unit on the ground floor, and what Soporn wants to do is convert that unit from commercial to residential. And when she does that, she's going to split that into two residential units. So the end product would be a 12-unit residential building. The variances that we're requesting are lot area per dwelling unit. Right now, this is 535 square feet. We're requesting 445, so about a reduction of about 90. The minimum is 2,500. The second variance is the usable open space. Right now, there's zero. You can see the building, you know, essentially it takes up the whole property. There's a minimum of 250 square feet per unit. Because we're adding a dwelling unit, that increases the nonconformity, but there's not actually any reduction in that usable open space. It's going from zero to zero. The third one is parking. So there are actually eight deeded parking spaces across Branch Street, and that's, there's condo documents at the registry of deeds, and it's all at the registry. Those are staying as-is. This unit has the rights to one of those spaces of those eight, so we're just requesting a variance for the quantity of parking spaces. For a 12-unit building, two spaces per unit, you would need 24, and there's eight currently, and that's, that's what we're proposing. So those are the variances that we're requesting. This is an old building. It was built in the 1900, or early 1900s, you know, long before zoning came in, so that's why it is a small property with such a large building. Staff did comment on this and noted that that commercial unit has been vacant for some time, and I think they seem supportive of the idea of, you know, getting residences in there. You know, as you know, well, needs as much housing stock as possible, and, you know, they seemed like they would like that to be occupied rather than remain vacant. It's, it's all interior. There's no exterior. Site work proposed. That's really the, the key points. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ansley. All right, now we'll open the hearing to the public. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition's position? In opposition? All right, in opposition, seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor's position? In favor?
Yes, I should speak in favor.
Sure? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. So I'm Nina Abeditari. I own a unit at that 110 Branch Street up on the third floor, so I just do want to say, kind of reiterating what he did say. When it was a commercial unit, it did cause a little bit more congestion in that area. Branch and School Street is very busy. So being residential, it would kind of be better, not only for the tenants in the building, but, you know, it's all residential neighbors as well. And we, there is one parking space already for that building, so it would just be kind of one more car in that area. So I think it would be positive and beneficial also with, you know, help out the housing situation in the area as well. So that's all I just wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak in favor's position? In favor, in favor. All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We're going to open questions and comments from the board now. The chair organizes Mr. Bria. Mr. Bria, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a great repurpose. I was a bit skeptical initially, thinking there would be a parking crunch, but our transportation engineer hasn't indicated that there would be any problems with the additional on-street parking, so nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bria. The chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's wonderful that we're repurposing a commercial unit and going to residential. There's a cost to that, obviously, but it's, it's, it's going to be turned into two condos, is that correct?
Yes, yep, the condos, so they're individual unit notice, yeah.
So we're helping to satisfy the need for housing in the city with relatively modest cost housing as condos. Great solution. Sorry that we don't have parking dedicated to this, but there is street parking available, and you do have eight parking spaces dedicated to the other units in the building, so I was surprised you were able to squeeze the two-bedroom and the one-bedroom unit into this space.
I can't take credit for that. That's the architect.
Yep, well done, well done. Natural light in one of them for sure. The second one, a little less natural light, but that's okay. It's the way it goes. But I really like the idea of providing condos, homeownership at a more affordable point, price point, and it's good to see this vacant space being repurposed, so. Some of the variances that you're asking for are already in place.
Yeah, okay. That may make sense, yeah.
The fact that the dwelling units, open space per dwelling, there's no open space here. It's across from a cemetery, so you kind of have open space over there, I guess.
I think there's a good-sized park right nearby, too, one of the staff.
Clemente Park is getting redone, and that's a wonderful park, yeah. That's not too far away, I agree. But then the relief for minimum lottery per dwelling unit, again, that's relief that's already existing in the eight units. So it's really the off-street parking that's the one that I think is the hurdle for me, but other than that, I think I can go along with this, and I love the idea of repurposing this empty commercial space, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I agree. I think this is a great repurpose of the, of the, the commercial unit for the need of, need of housing. I'm just curious about the egresses. I'm just, I just want to clarify, I'm looking at it. So the two-bedroom egress is the entrance of the commercial that's on the corner of Branch and School Street? Is that, is that the way it is?
Yeah, let me just pull up the floor plan.
Looking at the floor plans, I have the layout. I just want to, I just want to make sure the egresses, try to, I mean, I'm sure it's fine, it's just trying to figure it out.
So I think the two-unit would be accessed here, and then the one-unit...
Is in the back there somewhere?
Yeah, this door right here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
No, because I was looking at the floor plans, and like, I see where the first bedroom is and the second bedroom, and, but noticing it, you know, exterior, it says existing column, and I'm looking at a photo of it right now, and, because the corner of Branch and School Street is where the...
There's a bunch of doors, egress doors. There's five or six along this wall, I think, to individual units, so.
Yeah, okay. Nice. No, again, I think it's a great repurpose of the, the building. I think it'll, you know, assist us in our housing needs, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair organizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I think this area is in, it's having a little identity crisis. Tomorrow, there's a motion, the city council, to extend the traditional mixed-use across the street for three units. So they're looking to put more commercial in, and at the same time, we're looking to take commercial and move it to residential. So I think maybe the timing on this is not wonderful, depending on what the city has in store for the other side of the street. Truthfully, I think we're, especially with the one-bedroom, we're trying to squeeze every drop we can out of this. We're already at, you know, 500 per unit. Now we're shrinking that, so we'll, you know, I get it. It's not really adding anything to, it is to parking. I know you say that there's one parking spot, but there's eight spots. There's already 10 units, so you need 20. You can, you could technically say four of them for this. I mean, but they're really not. There's no parking. Anyway, you cop it up, but I do like the condo portion of this. It gets homeownership, and people building some financial stability, so, I mean, I'll listen to the rest of the board and what they have to say, but this one is kind of, I'm on the fence here, but...
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair organizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, I think, you know, as a fellow board member said, I think this is a good repurpose of what's there now, increasing the, the residential portion of it. So I think it's, I mean, I don't think it's, I don't think I have an issue with this. So I wish you good luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. Yeah, just, just like my colleague said, Mr. Ansley, I think your client, this is a good, you know, conversion. Again, housing is very needed, and this, this area is kind of a mix of housing businesses, so fulfilling a strong need for the, for the city, for the Commonwealth, so, yeah, I can support this.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one more thing? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Proko.
I just realized that the wastewater had made some comments about the site plan does not illustrate the utility connections.
Yeah, it's funny, actually, I had requested record documents of the utilities on the street back when I filed, and I just got them last week, so I'm happy to look at that and add them, just haven't had the opportunity to do so yet. We're happy to do that, maybe as a condition that will satisfy the staff comments.
Okay, thank you. I'd like that as a condition, Mr. Chairman.
A condition, okay. Yeah, sounds good, Mr. Proko. All right, any other comments by my colleagues before we move forward with the motion? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-30 for variances at 110 Bridge Street. Variance include minimum lottery per dwelling unit, minimum usable open space per dwelling unit, and relief from minimum off-street parking, with the condition that the applicant work with the wastewater department to satisfy the requirements to go from a eight-unit building to a 10-unit residential building.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
We'll go in 10 to 12 for...
I'm sorry.
Say that again.
That's correct. Going from a 10-unit residential building to a 12-unit residential building. Sorry, thank you.
Well, I guess technically it's an 11-unit mixed-use building right now that's going to go to a 12-unit residential building.
Yes.
It's, it's the residential piece that we're all concerned about.
Yeah, but that's going to be dealt with by the planning board anyways, too, so.
Yeah, I should mention, we do need to go to the planning board for special permit site plan for the use and just for the size of the building, so.
All right, so motion by Mr. McCarthy, second, or by the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the condition.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
Member Bria.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approved, conditions.
Member Havi.
Approved.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sir. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. We have ZBA-2025-31. The petition is a variance. The applicant is Mad Jack 7 LLC, property located at 31 Chapel Street. The petition is applied to laws of order appeals, seeking a variance approval to construct a single-family home at 31 Chapel Street. The subject property is located in the urban multifamily UMF zoning district. Their proposal requires variance approval per Section 5.1 for relief from the minimum frontage requirements and any other relief required in law zoning ordinance. Good evening, councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Mad Jack 7 LLC. With us tonight, we have Steve Laurenson. Steve is the principal of Mad Jack, and we have Matt Hammer from Landplex. As the chairman mentioned, this is a request for variance pursuant to Section 5.1 of the city's zoning ordinance in order to construct a single-family home on this vacant lot located at 31 Chapel Street. Property is located within the urban neighborhood multifamily zoning district, and the lot consists of about 4,643 square feet of land. The applicant purchased the property back in May of this year, and if approved tonight, the intention is to construct a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home with about 2,000 square feet of living space. The property will also be serviced by a two-car driveway, which we located at the rear of the property, accessed by way of a shared easement with the neighboring property running along the southerly border, border of the property, southerly lot line of the property. That's important. We know that, that this is a densely settled neighborhood. Parking is at a premium, so we are able to provide the two off-street parking spaces that are required. Except for the minimum frontage requirement, we meet all of the dimensional requirements pursuant to 5.1. The UMF district requires that you have a conforming lot, have 55 feet of frontage. In this instance, we have 41.9 feet of frontage, so we're short by about 13 feet. Most of the residential properties along this lower half of Chapel Street, and I would suggest, I'd go as far as the entire neighborhood, lack sufficient frontage required in the UMF district. We have provided a neighborhood exhibit plan with our materials, which shows a pretty good description of the number of lots that do not have the required frontage. So the intent of that is obviously is to show that what we are proposing is in line with the character of the neighborhood. In terms of the comments, the comments were pretty much straightforward, they point out that we are not adding to the significant congestion within the neighborhood in terms of parking, we are providing the off-street parking, and that the proposal does not derogate from the intent of the UMF zoning district. There were also a few technical comments regarding engineering, stormwater, and the water department, we have reviewed those comments. We have no concerns that we'll be able to meet all of those concerns during the build-out of the home, so we have no issue with any of those comments from those departments. And I would suggest that, you know, again, this is the urban multifamily zoning district, we're proposing a single-family home. We had looked at the possibility of proposing, you know, three or four units, we think we could have got the parking in by way of a, you know, garage-under-type townhouse, but really, it is a dense neighborhood, the applicant's very familiar with the home that he's building, you've seen this type of home come before you several times now, so we thought it was best for the developer, best for the neighborhood, to go with the single-family home that we're proposing this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt, Matt will go through with the plans with the board.
Thank you, councillor. Good evening, Ms. Hammer.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Hammer, Landplex Engineering, 60 Fletcher Street, Lowell, Mass. This is Chapel Street here, this is the lot here. It's 4,643 square feet, it's long and narrow. The existing driveway and the passageway easement is located here, and that's going to be utilized for the driveway to access the two spaces in the rear. The building will be fully conforming to the zoning setbacks, this is the same house we recently came before the board over on Billing Street, it works well in this lot because it is a narrow lot. We're also going to be proposing two shade trees out in front of the lot, and there'll also be sidewalk restoration for the expanded curb cut that currently is present on that existing property. We also have included drainage, and the rear building in the rear will be removed. This colored plan shows you how much green space will be on the property, so there'll be ample room for the single-family residents to utilize the open space on the property. And that's the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hammer.
Thanks, Matt. So ultimately here, this is a good opportunity to create an additional housing unit in the city, it will most likely be an owner-occupied home, it can be done without derogating from the intent of the zoning or without any detriment to the public good. So we believe that we meet all the criteria for issuance of the requested relief, and we respectfully request approval this evening. But we're happy to try to address any questions or concerns that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. All right, we're going to open the hearing to the public now. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition's petition? In opposition? All right, in opposition, seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone who wants to speak in favor's petition? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing none, the public hearings closed, we're going to open questions to the comments of the board. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nice use of a lot here, but more importantly, to me, you're putting in green space and removing pavement. So there's a very wide curb cut here, that's a big paved area, so you're providing shade trees on the street, a section that doesn't have shade trees. So you're introducing some nice shade in a zone that is certainly impacted by heat island effect. You're doing subsurface infiltration, so that the runoff that currently pours into Chapel Street from the paved area is now being mitigated with the additional parking in the back. I like the shared driveway, but I think that's a second variance, maybe, or another variance, maybe? Dylan, is that, do we need a variance for a side, for a driveway setback?
There is an exception for shared driveways, as long as both properties have easement access.
Got it. I didn't see that, great, okay. I think shared driveways are wonderful in tiny little lots like this, a great way of saving the green space on the lot itself. And you're providing another house that is providing that affordable housing stock that we need so sorely in the city, and you're doing a great job of doing that. It's a very, I don't get tired of this design, so it certainly would fit in well in this neighborhood. And I think we just have that one condition, that you satisfy the requirements of the wastewater department, but I think that would be the only condition, but, boy, keep it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman, councillor, thank you for providing the analysis and neighborhood, and it's clear that all the lots across the street from this property are all non-conforming and under the amount of frontage that you're seeking here today, including the one that's even next door that you're getting the easement off of, number 37, so it's, the relief that's being requested, I think, is fairly minimal, it certainly meets all the, I think, the criteria of all the variances, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi, Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
I'm also up.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair recognizes Mr. Procol, Mr. Procol, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is, this would be a nice project, I think it's obviously an improvement to the community, so I'll be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Procol. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier, Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't have any questions either, just a comment, thank you for your continued contributions to the city, we appreciate it, sir, and, councillor, to your comments, I think you could have really asked for much more, so this is very, like, tamed and very appealing to the neighbors and the community, so thank you for that. So the only condition that we have here is working with the water, wastewater department.
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, if there's no further comments by my colleagues, seeing none, all right, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-31 for variances at 31 Chapel Street. The relief sought is relief for minimum frontage requirement, with the condition that you satisfy the wastewater department's comments.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Procol, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the condition.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Procol.
Approve the conditions.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved.
Thank you, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, wish you best of luck, thank you, have a good evening. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda here, we have ZBA-2025-32, the petition is a variance, the applicant is Cara Boersberg, property located at 170 Mount Pleasant Street. The applicant is applied to Los Angeles Appeals, seeking variance approval to construct a front porch to the existing home at 170 Mount Pleasant Street. The subject property is located in the suburban single-family SSF zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from the minimum front setback requirements and for any other required Los zoning ordinance. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, board members. My name is Cara Boersberg, and I live at 170 Mount Pleasant Street. I inherited the property last year from my aunt, and I'm seeking a variance to add a front porch to my house, I need two additional feet of frontage, right now I have 15, but I really have more than 15, but the city owns part of my front yard, so I need the additional two, because Mount Pleasant Street is so wide, it goes into my front yard, so I need the additional two feet in order to meet the requirements.
Awesome, okay, thank you, ma'am, for your comments. We're just going to open the hearing to the public, anyone who wants to speak in opposition is petition? In opposition? In opposition, seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone who wants to speak in favor's petition? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing none, the public hearings closed, we're going to open questions to the comments of the board now. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the applicant providing the information along with the narrative, two feet, I don't know, it's a big ask. I don't think so, it's very minimal, so, and I hope you, I can support this, and I hope you enjoy many evenings sitting on the porch.
I do, too, I have a very beautiful sunset and sunrise back in front of my house, so it's...
Nice, I can approve this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi, Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Good luck, I have nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Havi. The chair recognizes Mr. Procol, Mr. Procol, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the applicant lives on a very nice area of town, it's considered God's country, and I think it's got a...
Thank you, Ms. Procol.
It'd be a great addition, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier, Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I agree with my fellow colleagues that this isn't much of an ask for two feet, anytime you can introduce a front porch in a neighborhood, it only helps with community connection.
Absolutely.
And I love to see them, I know we have an applicant coming before us, I think, at the next meeting, looking to enclose their front porch, and I'm like, oh, boy, but I love open front porches, so I definitely want to...
I cannot believe the amount of traffic, people walking by every day, and I have a side porch, but it's not the same, because it's by my driveway, so...
It definitely helps foster community.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. I have no concerns, ma'am, two feet of relief, like my colleague said, is very minimal, and this is, this can add value to your home, but to the whole neighborhood, so wish you the best of luck as well.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments from my colleagues before we move forward with the motion? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-32 for a variance at 170 Mount Pleasant Street. Relief sought is for minimum front yard setback requirements.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Procol.
Approve.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved, wish you best of luck in your audition, ma'am. Have a good evening. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have ZBA-2025-33, petition is a variance, the applicant is John Forton, property located at 21 Spring Ave and 10 Sawtelle Place. The applicant is applied to Los Angeles Appeals, seeking a variance approval to reconfigure the lot lines of the above-abutting properties and construct a new single-family home at 21 Spring Ave. 10 Sawtelle Place is located in the urban single-family USF, and 21 Spring Ave is located in the traditional single-family TSF zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval for section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirements, and for any other relief required in the laws ordinance. Good evening, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Attorney Joseph Klimont appearing for the applicant. And the applicant, John Forton, is the owner of 10 Sawtelle Place, which is his residence. He also owns the abutting lot at 21 Spring Ave and the two lots are back-to-back. 10 Sawtelle has 3529 square feet of land where his house is, and it's a pre-existing non-conforming property. The lot at 21 Spring Ave, abutting to the rear, has 8,530 square feet, and the applicant would like to reconfigure the lot lines, adding to the smaller lot, taking away from the larger lot to try and balance them out a bit, he would like to sell the vacant lot to be able to build a single-family home on the now vacant lot. We would need three variances, one for 21 Spring, the new lot, is being proposed at 6,875 feet, when 7,000 is required, and then for the pre-existing non-conforming, the front yard that he currently has, 10 feet are required, 5.5 is pre-existing, the rear yard, 15 are required, and 6 are pre-existing, so we would need variance for those, too. We believe this reconfiguration would balance the lots, be consistent with the neighborhood, and the applicant doesn't have specific plans for the house yet, but if the variances are granted, he'll leave that to a buyer to fit it within the zoning requirements for setbacks and everything like that. The applicant believes the desired relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning, but we're respectfully requesting approval.
Okay, thank you, councillor. We're going to open the hearing to the public, anyone who wants to speak in opposition is petition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed, anyone who wants to speak in favor's petition? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing none, the public hearings closed, we're going to open questions and comments to the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi, Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. So according to this, there's going to be a second house built, but there's no plans currently for a second house?
That's correct.
Okay, so the wording's a little bit off on what we have here.
If the variances are granted, a new buyer would have to fit within the envelope of the setbacks, or seeking of the variance if you wanted to do something bigger, but I think the law would be big enough that that won't be required.
So they plan on selling the second property, and then whatever developer buys it can deal with the issues? Okay, because some of the comments were even about a potential home, and we really can't talk about what-ifs. So really, what we're here for is the non-conforming that's already on the lot that the house is on, so unless we're requesting you to tear down your house, that's not an issue, because you're actually adding more...
Correct.
...square footage on that one, and then 100 and change on the lot size on the potentially being sold lots. And I think it's, it makes sense, it's simple, adds more space to the homeowner's lot, and now there's potential for another property to be developed. I have no problems, and I'm all for this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Havi. The chair recognizes Mr. Procol, Mr. Procol, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, just given the circumstances and the square footage, I think it makes sense what the applicant is trying to do. And again, it doesn't look like the departments have any objections or concerns, so, with this, with the footage. I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Procol. Chair recognizes Mr. Brier, Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good idea, I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
He's a tough one to follow. I think it makes a lot of sense, I'm confused, though, we're granting approval of a buildable lot without a plan for what's going on it, is that correct?
Not a determination that it's buildable, just a variance for the size of the lot, he would have to meet the criteria to make it buildable, either fit it in the envelope as far as setbacks are concerned, et cetera.
Oh, no, no, I understand, so, Dylan, if you could just help me here, please, we're providing a, for a lot, what is it, 1A, I think the number is? Are we granting that lot to be a buildable lot in this variance, is that what we're doing?
Well, the lots are considered merged for zoning purposes, so one variance would be to unmerge them for zoning purposes.
Okay.
The other one that you're asking about...
Which has the relief of 125 square feet, but without seeing it come before us with a building on it, are we granting, because it's just being presented tonight as a empty lot?
I'm unsure, I'd have to ask the lot department.
Right, I'm confused myself, because I don't think we're granting a variance that you can build on it without seeing a house that conforms.
Yeah, we're not seeking a variance to build on the property, we're seeking a building for the lot, a variance for the lot size only. If the variance is granted, we'd do up an A and R plan to move the lot lines, and then any builder would have to come in and prove that it's buildable to the building department.
But would they have to come back? But would they have to come back before the zoning bylaws to get relief to build on it because it's an undersized lot by 125 square feet?
If the variance is granted today, they wouldn't need that variance. They would only need a variance if they're going outside the envelope.
I don't know, can we do that? Can we grant a variance on a lot that doesn't have a house on it as a buildable lot?
I have to check with the lot.
I've never done that before on the board. Anyway.
I can say definitively that you can, because I've done it, and in fact, the last time I was here, we did that.
Okay, thank you.
Lighting up a lot, to set one aside for a development.
I have no, I have no problem doing it, it's in your, and if something on the road doesn't work out, you might be back in front of us, but hopefully not. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, but just for the lot size, if we grant you the relief, and then if things don't work out, you're just going to be coming back in front of us anyways for whatever it is, so. And I'll note that Peter even noted that on his comments, that applicant intends, if the applicant intends a single-family home or a lot, once the plans are submitted, they may need more variances, so, I mean, it's, we may be seeing you in the future, we'll see, councillor, I don't know, but who knows?
I would anticipate that whoever wants to build on this will be able to fit within the envelope and not need additional variance.
I'm sure you're going to do the best you can, whatever, to try to get it as close to, you know, buildable, without, you know, the need for coming in front of us for variances as possible, so. But this makes total sense to me, and I would be in approval of it, so I wish you the best of luck. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Yeah, I don't have any questions or concerns, it makes sense. Any other comments from my colleagues before we move forward with a motion? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-33 for variance at 21 Spring Street and 10 Sawtelle Place. 10 Sawtelle Place is seeking relief for minimum setback, front and rear setback, and 21 Spring Street is seeking relief for minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirements.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck, councillor.
Very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda here. We have the, we have other business here, minutes for approval for July 14th. Any comments, edits, revisions? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 14th, 2025.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes are unanimous, the minutes are approved. Any other comments from my colleagues before we adjourn tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Prokop, go ahead, sir.
I just want to make it known that I will not be at the next meeting, the 25th.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that update, Mr. Prokop.
Actually, our next meeting's not until September.
Mr. Chairman, I also...
September the 8th is our next meeting.
I'm sorry, it's not August 25th?
No, we only have one meeting in August.
Oh, then I retract my statement, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no worries, thank you. That's, that's good news. Mr. Brier, do you have a comment, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I will not be in attendance at that initial September meeting.
Okay, good to know. Thank you for that update, Mr. Brier. All right, any other comments before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention, I just want to wish the best of luck to former associate member, John Nixon. Too bad he's, he was a valued member of the board, and he will be missed, so good luck to him and his future endeavors, so.
Agreed, agreed. Mr. Nixon was a good addition, so best of luck in his future. Yeah.
I agree, I'd like to thank John for his dedication to the board, and I really will miss him, and maybe, maybe he'll be back, maybe he'll be back.
Yeah, you never know.
Have a job that requires him to be away, so we'll see. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, thank you. If there's no further comments, can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes are unanimous, we adjourn. Thank you, have a good night, folks.